And the board of supervisors approved and gave a million dollars to them and then another amount of money that they'll be giving over $600,000 a year for the next 10 years. Now here's the trick in this. The homeless are not going to just disappear off our streets and in fact, we can't under the contract even drop them off there. They're full. So what you need to do is when you see somebody and they want to be placed somewhere, you need to go onto your computer and call the Fairfield Dream Center. They are doing a, well, it's for homeless. They take the homeless and pick them up at a few places in the city of Fairfield and take them overnight to churches. They feed them and then they're warm or whatever overnight and then in the morning they take them back to where they dropped them off. And so that's working all right for us right now. We understand that we have a homeless problem. We all get it and we all are working on it and have done a lot on it over the last couple of years. People always say, "Well, what did you do?" So I just saved this little thing of all the things we've done and keep adding. We don't, we are not giving up on this. We understand. We live here. Yes, we go to North Texas street. So I want people to know that and to understand that we do live here. We get it. And yes, we go to all four corners of the city. So, and then we have employees for the city of Fairfield who do a great job out there. So I don't want anybody to think that we aren't working on this. We constantly work on it. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was just how impressed the vice mayor and I were today. We had a chance to interview some of our young people for the youth commission. And today I got a little teary-eyed because one of the young people, a young man, we first interviewed five years ago. And he says he remembers the white sweater he came in when he interviewed with us. And today he said, you know, just very quietly, "Well, I wanted to know if you guys would let me serve for the rest of the time. You know, I'm here in Fairfield till I leave to go to Yale." So he's going to Yale in the fall and I thought, "Well, I think we have room for you right here in my seat." Yeah, I mean, it's like, "Are you serious? This kid's going to Yale." And you know what he said? He said that he wanted to thank the people in Fairfield for giving him a chance to serve them here as a young person when he started, when he was 12. And he is amazing, humble, Yale. And I said, "Just go to Yale. And yes, you can stay here and do anything you want." But it just goes to show, he said, when he was interviewed by the Yale panel, he talked a lot about being on the youth commission and how important that was. And they told him that was part of the reason why they took him, Mr. Mayor. They took him because he was involved this way and he grew. You know, we saw him grow, you know, physically and in every other way. Amazing. And then these kids, all I know is we have a bright future here in Fairfield. And it's a real, real gift to be able to speak with them and let us know what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent report. Thank you. Councilman Tim, you have some developing news for us.
Yeah, actually I do, Mayor. And what this is, is the old Orchard Supply, the old Osh Building, Travis and Oliver has, will have a new tenant. They inked the deal this morning. I can't tell you who it is, but it meets all zoning requirements. I spoke with the owners and the developer. They're very happy. They'll be getting stuff into the city. And if it comes to fruition, which I assume that it will since they have a deal, hopefully it will decrease the homeless in that area. They've turned that into a bed and breakfast behind it. But there'll be more coming out, but it sounds very, very promising. And in the same vein, this past week, most of us had an opportunity to go to the EDC Annual Luncheon, Economic Development Corporation Luncheon. And I got quite an education on things that I didn't know what they were talking about. And by that I mean MOOC, M-O-O-C, if you've ever heard of it. It's an online, how you can teach yourself. And it has to do basically, I think, with a virtual reality. And I mentioned to the mayor, what they were talking about took me back, I don't know how long the internet's been in, I'd have to ask the vice president, but how long the internet's been around. But if you remember the first time you ever heard like NBCNews.com and I looked at my wife, I said, "What is .com?" I had no clue what it was. Well, this luncheon brought that out, only now fast-forward 20 or 25 years. But to me, it was almost like a quantum leap. This is how far we have come where, matter of fact, Matt, the guest speaker, and I can't remember his name, what is it?
Gardner.
Gardner, thank you. He hires people at his company. He says, "I've never met them." They could be in Costa Rica, the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, sitting on the beach or sitting in the house in their pajamas. I mean, he said, "Millennials, they do what, what they do. And this is, this is the new way." And so we're trying to put it together, like, "How is this good though for Fairfield-Salano County?" And he goes to explain and I still, I was bewildered, but I was amazed about how fast things are happening. It's almost like a superhighway. It's almost like Interstate 80 today when they were fixing a pothole and they stopped all the traffic and I was the first car to go through. And there's nothing behind you and nothing ahead of you. And it looks like you could go a million miles an hour. It's like an eight-lane freeway with nothing on it. Well, this is where, and when I say kids today, 25, 30, 35-year-old, hard-working folks are quantum leaps ahead of us. But they, it's all designed to make it bigger, better, brighter, faster. I still shake my head. Anyway, I look up MOOC, M-O-O-C. I did. I've turned my grandkids on to it and it's quite fascinating. So that's pretty much it. And then I still, like I said, it's exciting. We'll see how it helps us. But companies are involved and big, big, big companies that we've all heard of. So who knows? Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Vicaro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, everybody. And I know it's been a little chilly out there at night, so hopefully we're providing shelter for people that need it. But what I wanted to actually bring up, and we talked about the youth in the city, but there was a news story I saw almost two or three times about this time of the year, there's an academic decathlon that happens in Sacramento. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you're familiar with it being a Vanden, former Vanden teacher. And we used to actually have our own academic decathlon in Juvenile Hall when I ran the court schools. And I know some people think that's crazy, but believe me, those kids study just as hard as, maybe harder than the people that, the kids that are in public school. But what I'm trying to get at is that Paradise, which went through a total disaster this year and everybody knows it, they focused on one of the girls who was on the decathlon team that actually was in the contest. And it was just, it was a very inspiring story, you know. So she had lost everything. Her family had lost everything. Her friends had lost. And here she is studying for the academic decathlon with her friends rooting her on and her teacher rooting her on. And it was, it was really inspiring. And I thought, you know, anybody that says they can't do it, they should have watched this because she can do it. And she did it. And she's excited about going on to college. And, you know, I think we should consider ourselves lucky that, you know, obviously a couple of years ago, we went through a real scare here in Fairfield, but they went through a disaster. And to see somebody, a young person like that come out of that and stronger than ever, it was pretty inspiring. Of course, it made me believe, and I always will believe in the young people in this, you know, in our country, in our state. But it was just a very uplifting story. I just wanted to share that. Hopefully some people saw that. I think it was on KCRA. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Pretty exciting this evening, you guys. Well, some of us were able to go out to the county jail last week for the reopening, or the opening of a $23 million vocational training program. That's pretty impressive. And then last Thursday night, I was asked to speak before a group of felons who have completed their re-entry into society. And that was quite, quite an experience. And many of them, of course, are natives of Fairfield and they have returned now and they're, and some of them already have jobs that are going to keep them out of trouble. And then the good news is that tomorrow, over in Willow Hall, the Salano Transportation Authority in conjunction with the city, will be hosting a symposium on pedestrian safety. And pedestrian safety is a major concern that most of us probably don't, don't know much about. But 1,068 of those were pedestrians injured by vehicles in this county. We're second in the state. That symposium goes from 9:30 until about noon. It is free. And then the other big one for all the electeds in the county will be on the 25th of this month. And that'll be the Summit on Housing. All of us are encouraged to participate. And we're going to take a bus to get over to the conference itself. And it'll be $10. And the $10 will cover the bus as well as the dinner that evening. So mark your calendars, February 25th. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I just wanted to report that two more streets have been adopted and we're up to a total of 30 streets now. And the other big news is that we have 4,100 Facebook followers now. We're, I think we're in line with the city of Sassoon. We were so behind them for many years, but we've caught up. That's it.
And deputy city manager, Laura Snidlin, your report, please.
Thank you. Well, in addition to the symposium on pedestrian safety, we have two more events this week to look forward to. They're both on Thursday night, so you're gonna, you could do two at once. One of them is the Parks and Rec Open House. It's an annual open house. You have some information there in front of you. It's Thursday evening at 6 o'clock. And if you haven't attended before, it is so much fun. They have games and prizes and they're really excited about showcasing all the programs that we offer. The other one is the annual fire department recognition. So we've got retirements and awards and honors. So the first one, Parks and Rec, is over in Willow Hall. And the other one will be here in the council chambers on Thursday evening. We also, I wanted to let you know that at your next council meeting, we are really looking forward to sharing our 2018 year in review with you. This is our annual chance to share our accomplishments. And so we hope that you too are looking forward to it and can go out and brag afterwards. And lastly, just a little bit about tonight's meeting and our broadcast situation. Comcast is actually improving our ability to reach more viewers by being able to view internet through, through their options, through their gateway. But there's a technical component that's going on that's impacting tonight's meeting. We have a, we're still broadcasting live. We're streaming it. But if they go to Comcast Television right now, they'll see a slide about how to get to that live stream. We've also tried to let our Facebook users know, that kind of thing. We only learned about this just about an hour ago. So it will be fixed, hopefully later this week. It will definitely be fixed before the next council meeting. So I wanted to let you know that.
Any changes or additions to the agenda?
There are not.
And we have no presentations, so process for public comments. Madam Clerk, please.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes. Thank you.
Only have one request to speak card, and that'll be Mr. George Gwynn, please. George.
Good evening once again. As you, I'm sure know, it's time to select the MTC Commissioner again. And it's not widely advertised as far as when the selection committee has a meeting. And I missed the first meeting and I put in a request for the second meeting verbally over the phone and didn't get an answer back. I was supposed to get an answer that afternoon. So the next day I did a written request, which I personally presented to the clerk on the sixth floor at the board clerk's office and got a date stamp on it. And I wasn't notified of the next meeting. Didn't find out about it until I read about it in the Daily Republic. And one of the things about the board commissioner position is it's supposed to be open to the public. It's not supposed to be to somebody that's elected. And they're supposed to have three people, whereas the MTC recommended Supervisor Spearing, which is not exactly totally transparent as far as the public is concerned. So anyway, I wrote a letter saying that it might be nice to open up position to the public. And at the board of supervisors meeting today, had a little discussion about that. And also I should mention that 70% of the public voted against RM3, but we've still got to pay the tab for that. There's been a hundred billion overage in the construction of the latest MTC building in San Francisco, which we also have to pay a toll for if we have any business there to cross the bridge. Doesn't seem like things are really going too well for the public. So anyway, the board, instead of trying to be more transparent and including it in public, voted today that Supervisor Spearing should continue to be the MTC Commissioner for another four years. And also that it was Supervisor Spearing, they got all the roads built and that it was due to him. And the only person that spoke out against the continuance of the same thing, not having any written documents about requirements or anything, was Monica Brown. And also I got an answer back from one of the three people that was nominated. That was the Mayor Valeo. And said, "They have time to answer the questions of the latter." And that was it. So I guess the fix is in for another four years. But I think come election time, people should remember that when you got 70% of the people that vote one way, you have your-
George, would you conclude, please?
Your electeds or appointeds going the other way, that's not good for our system of government. So stay tuned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't have any other requests to speak cards? We will convene the meeting of the housing authority, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moy, Commissioner Tim-
Here.
Commissioner Vicaro, Vice Chair Bertani-
Here.
And Chairman Price.
Clerk, if you would read the disclosure statement, please.
The holding of a joint meeting of the city council and housing authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint Resolution 2019-22 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, accepting the fire training tower project as complete. And our presenter is Director of Public Works, Julie Lucido.
It is good news. Good evening. So the fire training tower project is complete and ready for city council acceptance of the construction contract. So there are three things I want to do tonight. They will be very quick. The first is to recommend that you approve the proposed resolution to accept the project as complete. The second is I want to recognize our public works project team that was responsible for the design and construction of the project. Our two leads were Ryan Pangeneben on design and Tom Martian for the construction. So construction projects, as you know, are very challenging. And our team and these two leads deliver successful project after successful, successful project. And so that's hard work and I want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge our strong partnership with the fire department and specifically the collaboration with Steve Trapani and John Sturdy. With their partnership, they were able to guide the design and construction to make sure that we were delivering a project that would meet the needs of the city now and until the future. And so thank you to them for their partnership. And the third item for the grand finale, the chief will come up and talk about the importance of this project. So Chief Velasquez.
Lots of smiles here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Velasquez, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Can't tell you how excited I'm here to be here tonight. This was many years in the making. From the time we opened the fire station up on Union, well, all of you know, we were all here back probably when that happened. So on 1633 Union Avenue, now it's our vehicle maintenance facility. Just couldn't, can't tell you enough what this is going to do, not only for the fire department, but for all city employees and the things that we're going to be able to utilize this tower for. And we look very forward to an official ribbon cutting where we're going to invite all of you, the public, and to come out, do some demonstrations, do some rappelling. I think Chief Finn's going to do some rappelling for us. The police chief volunteered, so. So.
Want to race?
No, I knew he was going to say, doesn't have to be a competition. But nonetheless, we're going to do an official ribbon cutting ceremony. And I want to say some thank yous. But if you would just allow me to just, with our excellent communications video team, Bill Way, Gail Spears, Whitney Skilman, we had a camera mounted during the whole time of the construction. And I have a very, very short, I promise, little clip I just wanted to show you of the actual towers. So. to show you of the actual towers, so. So as you can see, this has been a long time in the making. It's right there next to the cemetery, like I said, on Union. It's our vehicle maintenance facility now. And that, that project, I can't tell you from the time I started my career in 1989 to now, you know, it's just, we've been talking about it for years. So look forward to the ribbon-cutting. I think the Public Works Director Julie did an excellent job in recognizing the people that really had a big part in this with Tom Martian, Ryan Pangeneven, my deputy chief, Steve Trepanier. And I do want to recognize George Hicks, who are former Public Works Director for his work in the beginning of this project and then obviously with Julie Lucido, the work she's done in helping us get us to the finish line this evening. So with that being said, last, I just want to thank all of you because you were here and you carried the torch from the previous council members that we got to this point. And like I said, this is really going to take us to the next level and just can't tell how excited I am to be here tonight to bring this before you.
Yes. Yeah, Chief, I don't know if you can answer this. Are other agencies going to use this?
So that's something that we have definitely been in talks with our police department because they do utilize the police training facility with other colleges. And one of the things we've been taught and learned from other agencies is that maybe in the first year, we'll kind of get, get really good utilization and figure out how to use the facility. And then there is a plan because we have, Salano College does have a fire science program and if there's ways that, I mean, the Public Safety Academy would be another example of something that, yeah, we were definitely, that is in the plan, the work plan, in fact.
Okay, because I think that we actually probably have, what, 18 or 20 different contracts at our shooting range?
Exactly. We are very familiar.
And they, it's more, and they pay?
Yes.
Can you see where this is going?
Absolutely. I think, and, and, and --
I like the bumper sticker on my car.
And, yeah, no, and in all seriousness, I think, I mentioned Police Chief Finn, we have talked about this because the facility is a great tool also for our SWAT team. I mentioned rappelling, K-9 officer training, forcible entry, just a lot of good utilization. We could also have police departments, law enforcement agencies using both facilities. So yes, we're definitely looking forward to something like that in the future.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. No, thank you.
Really well done. And I'd just like to make one quick observation. The Community Services Foundation, when we were doing all the toys for Christmas for the kids over there, the families living in that apartment complex thought they were watching The Seventh Wonder of the World growing up. It was pretty impressive. Well, thank you very much. Entertainer motion to approve resolution 2019-22. It's been moved by Councilman Vicaro, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries now, so thank you very much. We turn then to public hearings. We only have one. Madam Clerk, item number 10, please.
Public hearing, first reading and introduction of an ordinance 2019-03 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending chapter 22B of the Fairfield City Code relating to storm water management and discharge control. And our presenter is James Pollock of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I apologize, my presentation is not nearly as exciting as a training facility, so bear with me. As part of the city of Fairfield's, I'm sorry, the recommended action tonight is to hold a public hearing to introduce and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 22B of the Fairfield City Code relating to storm water management and discharge control. As part of the city's municipal regional permit with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the city must implement a protocol to ensure that polychlorinated biphenols, also known as PCBs, do not enter the storm drain system during construction or demolition. PCBs were commonly used during building construction during the 1950s through the 1980s, but they're now classified as pollutants. This amendment adds language to our existing storm water ordinance granting the city authorized a sample or require sampling on construction or demolition projects as a condition of a building or demolition permit. City staff has been working closely with other regulatory agencies, including the Bay Area Storm Water Management Agencies Association, also known as BASMA, in preparing the revisions to demolition permits to include the necessary language required by our storm water permit with the regional board. The revisions to the city's demolition permit can become effective once this ordinance revision is adopted. And this ordinance revision must be completed before July 1st, 2019, as required by the city's municipal regional permit. If approved tonight, we will return at the next council meeting to officially adopt the requested ordinance amendment to chapter 22B of the city code. And if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, James. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action, please. Entertain a motion then to hold a public hearing, waive full reading. Okay? Moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vicaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries now, so thank you very much. Okay? And then, okay, we're done. Thank you very much. There's no other business before us this evening. We are adjourned. That's a pretty short meeting, colleagues. Thank you very much. Good night.